Thank you for this day. We thank you for all the goodness that you have given to us. We pay a special blessing upon the meeting that we have here tonight. Bless us to be able to do your will and your service. We ask you to continue to work with our staff and continue to bless them and their families and our first responders. Please help us in order to be able to serve the city of Greenville as well as the state of South Carolina and America. We ask that you be with families who've lost property due to storms and property they've lost family members due to storms as well. We ask that you be with us all and stand by us and guide us. Help us to be able to have courage and strength to rebuild and to do what is right in your sight. We thank you for all you have given us and that we know that the more you give, we give to you, the more you will give to us. We thank you for what you will do for us in coming future. We pass a special blessing upon our children. Please keep them safe as they travel on the highways and byways of the schools. Ask you to be with our bus drivers and be with our teachers and administrators. We thank you for your blessings. Amen.
Our blessed citizens of the United States of America and to develop for which there's one nation under God in the physical with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Council clerk will call the roll.
Council member John DeWorten.
Here.
Council member Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Council member Ken Gibson.
Here.
Council member Will Brisington. Council member Russell Stahl.
Here.
Council member Dorothy Dow. Here. Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of July 20, 2023. Stand approved as submitted. Was there any objections? That was a long time ago, but if you remember it, these are approved. With a few folks who signed up to speak to us tonight, please observe the three-minute rule on the wall there and happy to hear from you. Mr., Joe Farmer, you are up first.
Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. Each of you received an email today with 11 PDFs of conflict of interest statements, statements by members of the planning commission. Ten of these are from this calendar year. These are self-reported conflicts of interest, so whether or not other side conflicts may have existed. October 20th, 2022, Derek Elderland. January 19th, 2023, Jeffrey Randolph. January 25th, 2023, Meg Terry. March 16th, 2023, Meg Terry. May 18th, 2023, Lynn Soulsby. June 15th, 2023, Lynn Soulsby. April 20th, 2023, Lynn Soulsby. Another one, same night, April 20th, 2023, Lynn Soulsby. June 15th, 2023, Lynn Soulsby. June 15th, 2023, Michael Martinez. January 19th, 2023, Lynn Soulsby. Why? Why are these people on the board? Why do you throw the vet members out of their appointment? Citizens deserve better. Where are the teachers, the firemen, the stay-at-home moms? Why are so many members involved in development? We need to replace any member who cannot serve without having a conflict of interest. You are planning commission and they report to you. Five of the seven members are failing us. You need to act and show the citizens you care. Your action or inaction will show the citizens which side you're on, developers or residents. You own this problem and you need to fix it. Replace these five of the residents who are not tied to development. Now, this is in addition to the eight instances with zoning appeals. So between these two boards, in less than 12 months, we've had 19 times when they themselves have reported conflict of interest. It's not working. It's not representative. It's a different system that these old boards are playing in. They're just applying their own tactics. You need that. Now, what does any business has three vacancies? Currently, there's three attorneys on that board. We don't need three attorneys on that board. We need some people who actually live in the neighborhood. They don't have some connection to development or not an attorney. See if you can find those three members, because I'm gonna look at their resumes. Thank you.
Ms. Jan Butler. Butler.
My name's Jan Butler. I'm a dental hygienist here in Greenville. I also have done volunteer work at a local thrift shop at West Blue Ridge Zion Thrift Store, and I live in University Park Association. I've become more aware of the homeless situation here in Greenville. I've been living here a long time and working with the thrift store. We help low-income and homeless people over there. There's a lot of homeless that hang out over there. I have some questions to ask. Do we know where the homeless are coming from? Do we know why the homeless are able to get a room and food at St. Francis? Do we know where the pockets of homeless are located? I know one of the pockets right across the street from where we live in the woods next to Cataran's. There's about seven of them, because I've talked with one of the homeless that lives there and gave them some food and water. Anyways, do we know how many homeless young people and children there are? The Greenville Journal article by Mike McMillan from December 22nd, 2022 states homelessness in South Carolina, especially upstate, has been a growing problem for, you know, many years. And new numbers show 6,500 homeless children receiving services. So young people is really what bothers me, seeing a lot of young people out there that are homeless. I mean, all of it bothers me. But does the city have any plans in the making to provide shelter and mobile showers? I believe this is what we need to do in the city to help prevent problems that are occurring at small businesses. I mean, downtown, I know there's been disruption at the farmer's market. I feel like, you know, I know of pockets all around Greenville, some of them. I know the police department does too. And, you know, they probably get calls of disturbances all around the different homeless communities that are around. And so I'm just wanting to be proactive about this problem. I feel that Greenville, we can provide shelter for the homeless and maybe a place for them to stay or hang out or whatever in bad weather, because over at the thrift store, it's an old shopping center, but there are a lot that hang out over there, and it does hurt the business. And I'm afraid that if we don't do something proactive, that it's just gonna, you know, get worse like other big cities. And I feel like as human race too, humankind race, there should be something that we do for the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure, we'll make sure someone's in touch. We kind of fill you in on the whole program and what we know and find you, I think you'll find it very informative. Matt Carter, you signed up, but those are items on the agenda. Do you want to speak to them now? Go ahead, yeah, sure.
That's okay.
Okay.
Mayor, councilman, my name is Matt Carter. I live at 12 East Lanue Drive. I am coming because we've got three items on the agenda under annexation, new business, D, E, and F will come up later. We affectionately call it the Norris Junkyard. You may be familiar. I'm here on behalf of Palmetto Alliance Property Group. Steve McNair is here just to say two things really. Thank you, being number one. Your staff's been great. We've got, this is our third project coming up out of a series of difficult ones, and William and Tony being one that was extremely difficult, sort of a leader into the Unity Park development side, and thank you for that. That allowed us to stair-step to one I was in front of you, I think last month or the month before, that'll be at planning on Thursday, the Salvation Army thrift store site where Salvation Army gets to reallocate funds for that into some of these various services you've just been talking about, we're excited about. And then that has allowed us then to stair-step up to the Norris Junkyard site, which I believe will actually open up with that annexation, a couple of other potential projects up there. So, William, that was it. Thank you, and I always like to be available for questions if we are in front of you, and that's the only reason I'm here.
Yeah, we have those items on the agenda, very significant annexations, and thank you for your cooperation on that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We have, let's see, some appointments to make on the youth commission. I believe Julia Pascoe and Julian Clark are here tonight to make the presentations. Is that right? Okay, thank you. Going to make some recommendations to us, so thank you for that. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Thank y'all for having us. Hi, so my name's Julian Clark. I'm one of the coaches on youth commissions. I'm a senior at J. O. Man High School.
And I am Julia Pascoe. I am also a co-chair on the youth commission. I am a senior at Greenville High School. We would like to recognize the current members of youth commission who are in attendance here today. Please stand as I call your name. Lori Clements, serving as secretary from St. Joe's Catholic School, and Emcee Wallace, who is serving on the youth commission and goes to Veritas Prep. And y'all can be seated.
Right here.
All right, so before we introduce our recommendations, we wanted to share that last week, the youth commission attended a strategic planning conversation at Unity Park hosted by Clemson University. And at that meeting, we were talking with the Greenville Parks and Recreation and Tourism Department, and it was really exciting because we were able to discuss city issues that affect teens in Greenville City. We're discussing, we're discussing how we have strong feelings on, like, I'm sorry, we're discussing issues we have strong feelings on, and we have, we have opinions on how we can improve these issues. We look to explore these topics and conversations more this year, to see other recommendations we can make to city and leadership and other departments to enhance the experience for teens in Greenville. Please keep, please keep us in mind as you, as opportunities such as this occur again, we welcome these discussions. And thank you to the Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department for having us.
And now we would like to go ahead and recommend the following individuals for appointment.
Okay.
Erin Hessel from Greenville High School, Amelia Cook from Christ Church Episcopal School, Annika Crowe from J. O. Man High School, and Anna Castor Spratt from the South Carolina Governor's School for Arts and Humanities.
A bit of motion on council.
So moved.
Question second. All right. All in favor of these nominees, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, one point of privilege on this one. I had a breakout meeting with the same consultants for the strategic plan and heard from our Parks and Rec, Parks, Rec and Tourism Director Tara, that the youth commission was incredibly engaged in their session. And I think we rely on y'all so much in terms of volunteer help. I really appreciate y'all giving your input. A lot of what we build, we're building for you. We're building something that's going to be here, and we want you to come back for it after you go to school. So your input is critical. You are just volunteers. You are our advisors from your perspective and your lens. So I really appreciate y'all being engaged in that process. You got an A+.
Thank you. We appreciate all y'all's support a lot.
And we're good, and we appreciate you getting a lot of use out of Unity Park at the same time. Thank you very much for that. New members, yeah, there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It should be a light agenda in the night, so feel free to just hang around if you wish. We'll get right through it. Consent agenda. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Court call roll.
Council member DeWorten. Council member Fleming.
Aye.
Council member Gibson.
Aye.
Council member Brisington. Council member Stahl. Council member Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Reg agenda, 15A, first reading.
An ordinance to appropriate $1,510,174 in the miscellaneous grant fund for the state-funded school resource officer program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, and we have our chief with us tonight. Very important.
Good evening, Mayor Castle. Good to see y'all. Hope everybody had a good break. I'm excited to be able to announce tonight that we have been awarded a one and a half million dollar grant from the state to expand our school resource officer program. We currently have 12 school resource officers in 10 schools. In two of our high schools, J. O. Man and Greenville High, we have two SROs in each of those, so that's the difference. This will expand it by six and allow us to add six more officers and to six new schools. That'll be three Greenville County schools and three charter schools. We have worked in collaboration with Greenville County School System to select these schools and with each of the individual charter schools that also applied for these grants.
So I have a question. Right now, before we got this award, certainly I think in our elementary schools, we've had SROs, but they've been rotating. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We have a couple of officers that rotate between the schools.
So, so in any given time, a school might be without an SRO, and even when there is an SRO there, it's just kind of in and out and in and out. And I think it cannot be underestimated the importance of having a permanent SRO in these schools to build those relationships with students. You cannot build a relationship with students if you are in and out and rotating out. And if you look at the high schools and the middle schools that have permanent SROs, those, those police officers, it's sort of an extension of community policing and our neighborhood engagement team philosophy, that if we can invest dedicated police officers in these places, they can form relationships with the population, in this case, the students, to build that trust and to be better at their job and to keep the school safer. So, I mean, to me, this was huge, that it was, you know, a million and a half to help complete that circle in these elementary schools. So I'm proud of y'all for getting that.
Yeah, it's great. We started on our last go-around when we got the grant for the three officers, if y'all remember that. And we put one in Sterling, which is kind of a hybrid school. It is elementary and middle school. This will add to A.J. Wittenberg and to Blythe. And so then we will only have five elementary schools that are not covered by a permanent SRO, and that will be on our next round. We'll go for that next year and try to get those positions filled.
Again.
And in a long history of this, it's so important, but it also tracks the tragedy of what's happened around the country, because we used to start just high schools, and then it seemed radical to need one in middle school years ago, and then we certainly accepted that long ago. It's also been good that every time we've had a grant, we've been able to continue the program, and we built this over years, so I concur with everything Council member Dow said. It's critically important. It's a sad commentary that we think about elementary schools, but we certainly do.
And, yeah, Mr. Mayor and chief, yeah, thanks a lot for that. And I look around this table and even in the audience that, you know, all of us have either had children in schools or had children in schools, and when you leave your child, you hope that they're safe. And I think by having the SROs there is an extra layer of comfort for parents to know that their child is going to be safe while they're not with you during the day.
Yeah, I think it's very important to have the SROs there. It is an added layer of security for the school and also for communications, because we know the quicker we get people on scene, whether it be a medical emergency needing EMS, a fire, getting the fire department there, or needing other officers, having that officer on scene that can get on the radio and respond those units as needed very quickly and efficiently. That's very important. Thanks.
You know, another thing is, and to your point, and I'm sorry, I don't have your name, Jan, there are over 1,000 students in the Greenville County School District that are homeless, over 1,000. And at one time, the largest population attended Blythe Academy. I don't know if that's still true, but having a permanent SRO there that would know that, that would, that would be, you know, aware of that situation, the special situation surrounding that student, just helps, you know, support that student and give them the wraparound that they need, you know, to the best that we can. And so I just think this is great that you've got these, and these are incremental positions. Will these be CIT-trained?
Yes, yes, they'll have full training. We will open it up to our inside internal department, and as officers apply for that, we will use them. And then there's a chance that if we don't fill the positions, we'll hire straight in for the position right now.
That's in addition to 10 new police officers in the budget this year too, so.
Yes, sir.
Sixteen, that's pretty darn good.
You have a questions, council? If not, did we get a motion in a second? Did we not? We did, I believe, yeah. Okay, clerk call the roll.
Council member DeWorten.
Aye.
Council member Fleming.
Aye.
Council member Gibson.
Aye.
Council member Brisington.
Aye.
Council member Stahl.
Aye.
Council member Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
All right. Okay, 15B begins annex-rama.
Yes, sir. All right. Ordinance to annex approximately 3.02 acres of real property and 0.19 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 454 Jacqueline Lane and to provide the zoning designation of C V Civic District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Court question? Okay.
I still don't understand. Why are these coming to us ahead of the PC? I know there's a good reason, but we have a long lineup of annexations coming to us for approval before they've been voted on by the PC. Is that just awkward timing or?
That's my strategy.
Mayor and members of council, with the timing, we went ahead and put them on the agenda for tonight, knowing that they were going to planning commission this Thursday. So to move ahead on.
What is the impact of the planning vote if we vote to approve to annex?
Well, tonight, we are annexing a total of 15.42 acres. That's with real property and right-of-way out of the five annexations. And so moving forward on that, prior to the planning commission Thursday, and then we can come back to you after that.
I was gonna come, oh, in between first and second reading?
Yes.
Ah, got it.
It's still got a second reading, but this allows, and sometimes it matters because of the proximity to a special service district that may cause mischief, if you will. So we decided it's far better.
No mischief here.
No mischief in this case, but sometimes it can happen, so.
And if I could add to, we also did it to shorten the process, because these are voluntary annexations, and one of the things that we heard from people was a complicated process. So this was done to simplify the process.
Okay, so this should be our pathway going forward. We get it for first reading, then it goes to PC, then back to.
That's right. This will be the pathway going forward.
Great.
That's the way we did it. Court call the roll.
Council member DeWorten. Council member Fleming.
Aye.
Council member Gibson.
Aye.
Council member Brisington.
Aye.
Council member Stahl.
Aye.
Council member Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15B.
C. An ordinance to annex approximately 1.24 acres of real property located at 75 Market Point Drive and to provide the zoning designation of C V Civic District.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Court call the roll.
Council member DeWorten.
Aye.
Council member Fleming.
Aye.
Council member Gibson.
Aye.
Council member Brisington.
Aye.
Council member Stahl.
Aye.
Council member Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Went so fast I couldn't comment. So this Duke Energy annexations, we're doing all over the city as well. Yeah.
But they're sub-stations.
But they all lead to other bigger things, so, okay, thank you. 15D.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.01 acre of real property and 0.18 acre of adjacent right-of-way located on Margaret Court at Pete Hollis Boulevard to provide the zoning designation of RC 2, Community Scale 2 District, and conditioned upon the completed purchase of adjacent property.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Court call the roll.
Council member DeWorten. Council member Fleming.
Aye.
Council member Gibson.
Aye.
Council member Brisington.
Aye.
Council member Stahl.
Aye.
Council member Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15E.
An ordinance to annex approximately 5.23 acres of real property and 5.31 acres of adjacent right-of-way located on Pete Hollis Boulevard, Alexander Street, Montgomery Avenue, and Brunkum Road, and to provide the zoning designation of RC 5, Community Scale 5 District, and conditioned upon the completed purchase of adjacent property.
Move to approve. Motion, sir, second.
Second.
Court call the roll.
Council member DeWorten.
Aye.
Council member Fleming.
Aye.
Council member Gibson.
Aye.
Council member Brisington.
Aye.
Council member Stahl.
Aye.
Council member Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. A special thanks to Shannon and the staff for this one. This has been around for years. This could well be one of the most significant annexations in our recent history of doing annexations, so thank y'all for working that through, and Matt, your comments tonight too. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, 15F.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.24 acre of real property located on Montgomery Avenue to provide the zoning designation of RC 5, Community Scale 5 District, and conditioned upon the completed purchase of adjacent property.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Call the roll.
Council member DeWorten.
Aye.
Council member Fleming.
Aye.
Council member Gibson.
Aye.
Council member Brisington.
Aye.
Council member Stahl.
Aye.
Council member Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15G.
An ordinance to rezone approximately 2.8 acres of real property located at 3410 Augusta Road from C 2 in the Land Development Ordinance to MX 2, Mixed Use 2 District in the Greenville Development Code.
Move to approve. Your second.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question on this.
Yeah.
Just a little background, please, Mayor Douglasfield, mine, specifically why the timing of this rezoning, why wasn't this captured in the development code?
Council member Brisington, it was inadvertently omitted during the rezoning process, and so we're coming back and cleaning this up so that it gets a new zoning category based on our new development code.
I thought Council member Gibson was supposed to catch all those things.
That's the case for this one and the next one.
And we, as you may recall, we did an annexation in this area just before the LMO was adopted as well, so we're making our way down Augusta Road to hopefully to I-85 and begin the cleanup of that area and lower Augusta. So this is, again, this is a really good one too, so we appreciate you all moving strategically on this one as well.
That's partly why it was missed was the, was when the zoning maps were completed, the annexation had not been completed, and so between the timing of the two items, this item was missed.
Yeah, yeah. It's all caught together, come to pass eventually. All right, call the roll.
Council member Brisington, were you offering the second with the question? I have a motion from Council member. Second, thank you. All right, now we can. Council member DeWorten.
Aye.
Council member Fleming.
Aye.
Council member Gibson.
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
15H.
An ordinance to rezone approximately 0.03 acre located on Tulip Street from C2 in the Land Management Ordinance to BH, Business Heavy District in the Greenville Development Code.
So moved.
Sir, second.
Second.
Call roll. For this annexation on Tulip Street.
There's a rezoning.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15A. Okay, thank you.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 24 offenses and Chapter 26 parks and recreation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville to include the Greenville Zoo as a city-owned location.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any more discussion?
I've got a point. This will generate a new revenue stream at the zoo. And last week, last Friday, we met with the Zoo Foundation and collectively, you know, talked about the zoo and our aspirations for the zoo and that this revenue stream could be.
There's a zoo picture.
Captured. Captured and dedicated towards improvement at the zoo.
Yeah, and it's, it's a common practice throughout the whole nation. I, now with children, have, do these type of things. And, and so, common practice and the administrations of these zoos have had no problems, but just all good, good.
A new revenue source.
Did you, kudos to the graphics and the staff on this one.
The cute end.
Thank y'all for that. Did Megan do that? Who did that? All right. Ready for a vote? Court call roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15J.
An ordinance to enter into a lease agreement with Rebuild Upstate for properties located at 601 Green Avenue and 16 Jenkins Street.
Motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Court call roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
One question. How long is the lease agreement?
One year.
Two years for the service center, but one year for the additional parking area.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, good, good compromise. Appreciate that. Good work on that.
Thanks.
Okay, new business resolutions, 16A.
A resolution to approve a lease between the Salvation Army and the City of Greenville to provide short-term public parking for Unity Park at 320 Hudson Street.
So moved.
Yay. Thank y'all. How many new parking spaces was given to Unity Park? Just out of pure interest question. Let me answer.
100 spaces.
100 spaces. I thought that was right. Yeah, okay. Awesome. Yeah. Appreciate the Salvation Army working with us on that. We'll be good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. 16B.
A resolution to accept $25,000 in donated funds from Chuck and Joe McPherson for the addition of amenities at Cleveland Park.
So moved. Second.
I think you may want to, this is the first of many donations to Cleveland Park that we're working on. But you want to go ahead and make a.
I do. I'm pleased to share that Chuck and Joe McPherson, who are here today, if y'all want to stand up. They have made a $25,000 donation for the installation and maintenance of a pollinator garden planned for Cleveland Park. They have made this donation in memory of their fathers for their military service and love of nature. This garden will be located between Cancer Survivors Park and the Major Rudolph Anderson Memorial. It will support the city's local pollinator population by providing a natural habitat to a variety of birds, bees, butterflies, and insects. This effort promotes the mayor's monarch pledge whereby more than 600 mayors and heads of local government are taking action to help save the monarch butterfly, which is an endangered species whose populations have declined over the last 20 years. We thanked Chuck and Joe for their generous contribution to helping our parks grow and thrive.
And I want to thank Councilman Stahl for his support on this over the, over the years. First of many great contributions for Cleveland Park. Thank y'all so much for doing this. More to come. It's an inspiration to the others. So, we really appreciate it in more ways than just this project. But thank you so much for stepping forward on this. We do appreciate it. Thank you, Chair, for, for suing that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. That means we, that means we accepted your money. Sorry about that. Before we ought to spin it, that's like. 16C.
A resolution to approve a lease agreement with Carolina Elite Soccer Academy for the continued use of city property located at the Windwood Soccer Complex.
So moved.
Wait, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Yeah, you can.
Move second. All in favor, say aye. That's a long winding road on that one. 16D.
A resolution to approve a structural encroachment permit for Hughes Development Corporation to add a scissor table on its property at 2 North Main Street, which will encroach into the public right of way of an unnamed alley off of North Brown Street.
Motion second.
I have a question.
You got me on this one, so I don't know what, okay.
In the packet? The sketch. Really?
Yeah, it's, it's not very detailed.
Not the scale?
Not to scale. Pretty simple lift there.
It's, it's great. It'll work. It's the way we get things built. I just had, I had to bring you up so we could see that back up to the scissor table.
There's a more detailed drawing there, so.
But this one, the sketch is how it'll be put in.
What's that?
This work on the sketch is how. It'll work.
It'll work.
It's good work.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much. We had a really productive executive session beforehand, Ms. City Manager. Thank you so much for leading us through that. And then a lot of big decisions all made in quick order. You want to make any further comments?
No, but I would like to just, if I could, Mayor, have a moment to introduce our new Chief Financial Officer, Patricia Dennis. There's Patricia. Can you stand up so we can see?
We're very fortunate to have her. She comes to us via rewa. So, thank you very much for being here. She's been a great add to our senior leadership team already in the last few weeks. So, thank you very much. And if I could also, we have a couple of new pedestrian crossings going in throughout the city. One, of course, being on Matt V. I know that's been one of interest for council for some time. And I want to thank our Public Works crews for all the work that they're doing. They're installing those. And our engineering team for their designs. So, that's been a great effort of ours. I know pedestrian safety is at the top of the list for you all. And I'm really excited to see some of these new crosswalks go in. Oh, yes. And Camilla, would you like to introduce our new deputy city clerk?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. Fiona Buchanan is our new deputy clerk here at the City of Greenville. And she comes to us. It comes from us, to us from Silver, North Carolina, and the Jackson County Board of Elections. So, very excited to have her here.
And Fiona, if you'd like to embellish that in the minutes, that would be fine. That's a good way to look at it. Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight. And thank you, council. Appreciate it.
It's 4:00 PM.